Session, we're coming into regular session and I'm going to call the meeting back to order and ask clerk to take role please.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin.
Here.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Here.
Supervisor McClure.
Here.
Supervisor Sullivan.
Here.
And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction of any new employees to the board? No? Okay, under this, we do have, I'm going to take it up now rather than later, there is a new employee that is not to the Board of Supervisors, but Dawn, do you want to do the introductions here? We do have a new Forest Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors, great to be up here again in my favorite part of California.
Identify yourself for the-
Oh, Dawn Amador with the Blue Ribbon Coalition. It's a great pleasure to introduce you today, the new District Ranger for the Smith River NRA, David Palmer, who comes to us from Humboldt-Toiabe National Forest in Nevada. So, it's you, Palmer.
David Palmer, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to introduce myself. I have spent the last nine years on the Humboldt-Toiabe, running the range program. Glad to be up here on the North Coast, look forward to working with everybody, you know, in a nice productive way that tries to address everybody's concerns. Second week on the job, so still trying to get my feet underneath me and I really don't know anything yet. But, once again, thank you and appreciate it.
David, welcome and I appreciate it. You know, we have to beg, borrow and whatever other implements of use to get the Rangers to show up and this is refreshing.
I, yeah, you know, and I extend an open invitation if you ever want to take a field trip or whatever, I always like to get to the fields.
And Dave, if I could, with the Board's permission, I'd like to invite you to come and give us a report on a regular basis, whatever you feel, you know, once a month or once every other month at least would be great if you would do that.
Oh, definitely, I can do it my way.
Great.
So.
That'd be great.
Thanks again.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, County Council, report of any actions from closed session?
No reportable actions today.
Okay, well, at this time, the Chair requests any deletions, additions or corrections to something that's on the agenda. In order to add something to the agenda that is not already there, it has to have arisen subsequent to posting the agenda, require action prior to our next meeting and we'd have to declare an emergency. Is there such an item?
Yeah, I do have an item. It's come to my attention after Agenda Review that the Fish and Game is having a meeting to list the gray wolf as endangered species in California on June the 4th. So, I'd like to have, I'd like to add that to the agenda if we could have some discussion and possibly send a staff member, so.
Okay.
Because we did take-
We did take action last meeting to send the letter opposing the listing of the gray wolf, correct?
Yeah.
Do you want to-
But there's a, but there's a meeting and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't send-
Then how about by direction?
Okay.
Just consensus of the Board, by direction, not requiring an action, direct staff.
Cool.
Find the appropriate member to attend.
Good luck, thanks.
Thank you. And Jerry, if you could let us, any information you have about where that meeting is and what time it-
It's at Fort Tuna, yeah.
Okay. Let all of us know, maybe some additional people want to show up. Anything else? All right, then let's receive reports or announcements from what Supervisors have done. Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you. Well, after our last meeting, I traveled to Sacramento to attend the annual California State Association of Counties Legislative Conference. It's there where Supervisors learn of budget updates and tend conferences and generally network with one another. One of the conferences I attended discussed the California drought outlook. It would surprise no one to know that California is in the midst of a serious drought, even here in Delnor County where our annual precipitation is up anywhere from, it's off anywhere from a one-third to one-half of our normal rainfall. But I was very pleased to learn that the California Resource Agency, the Department of Food and Agriculture and the California State Water Resources Board are actively looking into the desalinization project as a viable option. The process is expensive and there are some environmental challenges, but with unlimited reserve of water to our west, the challenges can be met and our water needs can be satisfied on a long-term basis. Also attended a Jefferson State Measure Town Hall meeting Saturday evening. A week ago Sunday, I spoke at the Conscious Living Expo at the Fairgrounds of, in expressing my support for Measure 8. Monday, May 19th, we held our Local Area Formation Commission, our LAFCO meeting was held. Very happy to report the Fair District Formation is moving along for voter approval in the November general election. Last Wednesday, our regularly scheduled Delnor Solid Waste Management meeting was held and the Authority received and filed the final R3 consulting report. And I will ask our Commissioners to meet in special session for a strategic options workshop to establish short interim and long-term goals for the Authority. Also, I'm pleased to report At-Large Member Mary Wilson was reappointed for, to the Authority for a second year and at the same time at that meeting, the Board established the At-Large Community Member will serve a two-year volunteer term. Also met with a group of veterans and city officials in working out some of the requirements for the Coastal Commission permit by the California Coastal Commission for the Point of Honor Monument. Last week, attended our monthly meeting of the Delnor County Crescent City Chamber of Commerce, nothing to report at that meeting. Last Sunday, I was privileged to plant some 1,700, be part of a group that planted some 1,700 American flags on the gravestones with those who have passed on and have served in our military. Yesterday, I observed the annual Memorial Day event honoring our veterans who have served in the military and those who have made that ultimate sacrifice so all of us may enjoy the freedoms we take for granted. Immediately following this meeting, today's meeting, we'll be heading over to the cemetery to assist other veterans who are removing the American flags on the gravestones of veterans. And that's my report.
Supervisor Hemmingson.
Thank you. Had a meeting with staff and Martha Rice, who is handling the Fair District, the Special District for the Fair Board, about the tax resolution, which is coming up on our agenda. Had a Local Area Formation Commission meeting. At my place of business, I had an environmental health inspection, which they come by and check all your hazardous materials. I normally wouldn't report on things that are happening at my place of business, but this is done by the health, by the county. And it was pretty seamless, although I haven't got the final report back, so I don't know what I'm going to have to do. So, we'll see how that goes. But I did get, it was strange that I got a complaint from a person who had gotten a, had an inspection and they were not very happy at all. And it wasn't because of the outcome, but the amount of time that it took to do all this stuff and he felt that it was a great cost to him, so I'll have that discussion. Not about my situation, but about theirs. I was invited to a meeting of the Council of Economic Advisers, sat through that. I did Agenda Review this week for this meeting. I had several conference calls. One conference call was to find out the impacts of going from critical, from acute care hospital to critical access. Virtually got no information. Nobody had any idea of what the impacts were, the people that we were talking to, this was through CMS. Didn't have really any information that they could give to us, so we'll continue to work on that. I had a conference call along with Jay Serena from Chad Yulinski, who is Senator Coburn's staff member. Senator Coburn does the pork report, which, where they're spending your money and it doesn't seem to be very efficient or effective. He puts out this report. They're very interested in the Herdy-Gurdy Creek acquisition where that, that whole process seems to be, have a flaw in it where they're basically allowing a nonprofit organization to maybe come away with over three and a half million dollars. So, anyway, they were very interested in that. I got a call from Linda Horn from Sutter Coast Hospital, asking me if I could sit down with her. They had a financial person from the Sutter Hospital in Delta, allowed me to go over any of the financial information that I wanted to, if I would sign a non-disclosure. I said, really uncomfortable in doing that because I report out. So, I didn't go over all the fine figures, they had a whole big old stack of them there. And I just went through the information that they would allow me to, to give to the public and basically the information that they had, even with the amount of money that they are subsidized by the state through this hospital tax, which amounts to about $5 million, they're going to lose about $2.1 million, or they lost about $2.1 million last year, according to their figures. Had a special meeting, the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, about some changes to the loan documents. Had a LTIC, Local Transportation Commission, special meeting, which was a closed session meeting, so there's not much I can say about that. I attended the Memorial Day services as normal, as it's always moving and a great experience. That's it for me.
Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. Following our meeting, two weeks ago, I left for a Coastal Commission meeting in West Marin, which is extremely rural community. We were in a community called Enverness, which has a population of about 200. It was very interesting to see that part of the coast and spent a lot of time on Tamalas Bay, which was very nice. Following my trek to Coastal Commission meeting, I had the honor of attending my daughter's graduation and she's now an RN, which is pretty exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank you. At the Coastal Commission meeting, Elk Valley Rancheria's Humboldt Road Project was moved to consent and approved. And then the Commission staff has developed two new tools for public outreach and one is titled, "When Do You Know You Need a Coastal Permit?" And the other is protecting our coastline and identifying where there may be problems that need to be rectified. So, both of those are available online right now at the Coastal Commission webpage, but they will also soon be available at CDD. And we'll have that, which will be a great tool in our toolbox, I think, to assist people in knowing what needs to be done. Also at the meeting, I picked up a publication by the California Fish and Wildlife and it is the Northern California Marine Protected Areas. And it actually is a map of all of the different areas to assist fishermen into knowing, to keeping them on the side of being legal and not having Fish and Game chasing them down. So, it is available around town. Supervisor Hemmingson has been gracious enough to say that he will contact Fish and Game and make sure that we get it into all the public places where fishermen are normally around, so people can make sure that they have the guide available to them because we don't want people to make mistakes. Also, at the Coastal Commission meeting, there is a great report on the Fukushima radiation along the California coast and it did both air, water and fish. And it's about 36 pages long, but it is a, if you're interested, it is something worth reading because the scientific information in the report was great, but it was also a report that was readable by a layperson. So, that one, I can help you find if you're interested because it is embedded in the last agenda. It hasn't been posted separately yet onto their webpage, but it's very interesting and I would urge people to read it because it's, I wasn't as scared after I read the report as I was before I read the report of what was coming, so it was good to, it was good to read. Also, at the Coastal Commission, we approved a $250,000 grant that will come through the California Park Foundation and it will be available to communities to clean up any debris that we find on our beaches. And so, I'm hoping that our, our staff will follow up on this, this money and make sure that we have it in our coffers because I think it's about $50,000 per community for cleanup if we need assistance and it will just go into general cleanup, I think, also. I've had some, some phone calls in the past on, in this past couple of weeks when I've been gone because I was on the road, I was only in contact by email and phones and I had zoning issues on coastal development permits. I've had complaints about a dog and I'm doing some follow-up with that and I still have three follow-up trails, three follow-up calls to make. And I want to double check to make sure that we did join the Coastal Trails Association because that was one of the questions on my sojourn. And I can tell you, I also traveled to see the General Sherman Tree and our trees, it doesn't hold a candle to our redwoods. So, I saw the other redwoods and these redwoods are by far the most magnificent. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Sullivan.
Well, as same as you and Supervisor Gitlin, I attended the CSAC Legislative Conference, California State Association of Counties.
I'm going to ask the phones to be turned off, please.
The, at that, we had two days of meetings, including one of the Rural Counties Caucus, which deals with more of the rural counties. There is, one thing you do find when you go to these conferences is there is a big disconnect from Supervisors in bigger areas of metropolitan urban areas. They do not deal with the same problems, they have no view, they have no, they don't live in reality, is probably the best way I could describe it. So, it's always a disconnect to, you know, water, groundwater was a huge issue down Southern California. They're dealing with a much bigger drought than we're dealing with up here, but just the disconnect on the finances, on laws that pass that need to be, and I think that was one of the points I made during the Rural Counties Caucus, during the Housing Land Use and Transportation Plan Committee, is the rules that you pass here need to, they need to be more regional instead of statewide. The state is too big, it has too divergent of needs and we just deal with a whole different set of problems up here than they deal down there. I mean, down there, they've got to worry about protecting the environment, here, it's already protected. So, those type of laws you pass statewide, they need to be more regional instead of statewide. It is good, one of the things, the good things on the conference that I'm sure the other Supervisors will, will recognize also is the ability to talk to other county Supervisors to kind of compare notes and seeing how they're dealing with issues in other counties and always good to meet with them and it's good to have an inside track sometimes on what is going on. The second day, we had our CSAC Board of Directors lunch meeting and then also, I'll let Supervisor Finnigan give you a little more details about the Board of Directors meeting. After that, attended special meeting for Delnor Solid Waste Management Authority. As Supervisor Gitlin mentioned, we, we approved a preliminary budget, we accepted R3's final report, just on recommendations for, for structural changes. And also extended the public persons to two years instead of, to give people history. It used to be a four-year term for the public, which is, is too long, but we did figure one year is just enough time for that public person to get up to speed on things, so having that second year is pretty, pretty informative and pretty helpful to get them so they can contribute in a meaningful way. And, and Mary Wilson's done a great job at that, too. One other thing we did get, and I haven't gone down to read it yet, but it is available at the Sheriff's Department, we did get final notification that the $29,000 was stolen, it was embezzled from the Solid Waste Authority. There is no smoking gun. As I've said at past meetings, the Authority had a habit pre-2009 of shredding records. So, there's not anyone we can point a finger at and say, "You did this." But it wasn't bad checks, it was $29,000 stolen and that's what the Sheriff's report determined. After that, also attended a special meeting, a Transportation Commission meeting, excuse me, which was in closed session, dealing with Highway 199. On a, also had a special meeting with Tri-Agency and we discussed kind of the future of where Tri-Agencys going and also the Council of Economic Advisers. Got a phone call from Congressman Walden's office and Supervisor Finnegan and I had had a meeting with his staff back in April 13 regarding Forest Service stuff. And one of the bills, HR 4272, which we actually voted to support at the last meeting, basically, I'll read you the gist of it here, and we've had not a lot of success and I'm glad you're here because I'm glad to see a fresh face and that's really important, just that we're all on the same page, I think, goes forward and I think the last Ranger really didn't have a skill at that, is probably the best way I'll put it. "It prohibits implementation or enforcement of the Forest Service Travel Management Plan for National Forests in the West. In order to implement a proposed road closure, road decommissioning or change in road densities in the Forest Service must consult during the creation of the environmental assessment or environmental impact statement with the affected counties. And a county within the road closure or adjacent county also count as that and get concurrence from the affected counties on the proposed action." So, that is a bill that's gone to committee hearing and I know we took, we sent a letter in support of it, so. But they are, Congressman Walden's office is reaching out to us and that is a positive thing about going to DC and also having an advocate back there is that they will reach out to you if you put a face with the name, so. And then received some constituent calls regarding some properties in Smith River that need to be addressed, as well as some other blighted properties in the community, potential blighted properties in the community. And on a lighter note, got a chance to go to the All County Band Concert, which is a really cool thing, that thing packs up. It was at the high school gym this year, the kids do a phenomenal job and I really got to give a lot of kudos to the music instructors in the community, Sedgwick and Marshall Jones and I knew, I always forget, Clancy, I think is, is, as well as Amy Ross. They do a great job and they get all these kids, you can imagine all these kids from fifth grade up to high school, getting on the same page and getting it quiet enough to actually play together. Pretty impressive. It's, it's always neat to go to that type of thing and you do see the future of the community, so, and that's, that's it.
Thank you. Did you have something you missed?
Yes, I left off the, a meeting that I had at 7 o'clock this morning with Linda Horn at Sutter Coast and we reviewed the number of transfers out and for the first quarter of 2014, there were 174 people flown out of Crescent City. Nine of those went to a Sutter Hospital and 36 of those people were already in patients when they came through the door. And that is close to the 175 that were in 2013, where there were eight that went to a Sutter-based hospital, 45 that went to, that were in patients already when they were flown out. And she was just pointing this out to me to identify that the majority of the people who are flown out of Delnor County are flown out because of orthopedic issues or cardiac issues. And that in the January to April of this year, there were two days that they were over the 25 number census for critical access and one day they had 27 patients and one day they had 26. But none of those patients were identified as being what they call observation beds and observation beds don't count against the census. And she believes that they will have their audit available online in the next couple of weeks and so people, they will try to make a public announcement on that. There's a company that has to do it because it has to have a certain amount of access for people who have some kind of handicapped accessibility, so it has to be translated in different fashions. And then she pointed out that currently between 50 and 55% of all of the patients that come to Sutter are Medicare patients and currently Medicare is paying 32 cents on the dollar compared to a, a $1.01 of critical access if Medicare were in, if we were critical access. And that 25% of all, of all patients are Medi-Cal and that 5% of the patients are what they call pure charity. It's not people who are delinquent on their debt, but it's people who come in and aren't able to pay. And then there was a discussion, which I would ask, that I need follow-up on through Jay, and that is that we had a contract through the Sheriff's Office that did their medical, their medical reimbursement and now it's gone to a third party. And we did approve that as the contract to it, but it's a third-party contract and it's outside of the county and she thought it was about a $50,000 loss for Sutter here. But my concern is, is that could that be a contract that was let inside the county to another private person? She wasn't really sure of that and I, and I didn't have memory of it, so I, I think I'm going to ask that we take a look at that and see that, look at that contract and see if there's a possibility that that contract be here because that's enough money for someone to make a living. Thank you. Sorry, I left that off.
Okay. I too had a couple of meetings I attended, of course, all of us experienced calls from constituents regarding everything from speeding to blight to dogs barking. So, I won't go into those. I did also travel to Sacramento, had a meeting with the CSAC Officers, which is the State Association of Officers, prior to the Ledge Conference. The Ledge Conference, the first day was workshops and presentations, the second day was the Board of Directors meeting. We kicked it off with a meeting of, regarding the budget with the legislative leaders, Darryl Steinberg, the Senator, Senate Pro Tem, Bob Huff, the Senator Minority Leader, Mark Leno, Chair of the Senate Budget and Fiscal Review, Connie Conway, the Assembly Minority Leader and Nancy Skinner, Chair of the Assembly Budget Committee. And they went through their takes, both as Assembly people and as Senators, Republicans and Democrats, on what needed to be done, what could be done in light of a perceived surplus in the budget and where it was going to be spent. And to hear them talk, it was more like kumbaya, that they all agreed on what the issues were, they all agreed on what the priority should be, but once they leave these meetings and they go back to their, their own caucus, something gets lost. So, it's nice to note that leadership is on the same page, it's just that it doesn't follow down. You heard from some of the Supervisors regarding what, some of the Urban Caucus meetings, the Rural Caucus meetings, the Suburban Caucus, the different workshops, whether it be on broadband or the interconnection of the criminal justice and healthcare system, so all, all very good stuff. Then on Friday, I also stuck around for the CSAC Board of Directors meeting of the full Board. And without going into all of the policy issues that we discussed, which I've kept you pretty well informed with, I should let you know that what was brought up are Health and Human Services and this is, I see a lot of faces in the audience that should be our partners in working on this. Supervisor Gitlin co-chairs the Safe and Healthy Family Committee, that maybe he can enlist your efforts there. California has the highest childhood poverty rate in the nation. I think that's something that we can all work on. It's been a priority of mine and of this Board to focus on the children as a bearer of, as the parakeet in the mine, if you will, of the temperature of our community and working on that youngest generation as well as our grade schools and our young adults, teenagers. From there, I had a meeting, left there, washed my clothes, turned around the next day and had a meeting regarding, it was a summit with corporate partners and the State Association of Supervisors, as well as the National Association of Supervisors and how different programs that they can bring to counties, benefits counties, much like our prescription drug wellness program, that everybody in the room, you don't have to be a county employee, is eligible- to be a county employee, is eligible for it. Walmart has it. I think I said at the last meeting, my son had a $1,000 medication bill that turned down to be $100 after using this. So next time you go to the pharmacy, and it's also good for your pets, ask them about the wellness prescription program. It doesn't cost you anything to join. But every time you use it, a percentage of the saving comes back to the county. So it benefits the counties as well as you hate using that term win-win, but that definitely is one. Then I attended the pre-WIR, well, that was the pre-WIR summit. WIR is the Western Interstate Region, which I represent. For the National Association of Counties, I represent California. And we had a meeting up in Anchorage where gas is cheaper than Del Norte. And we discussed some of the priorities, the MAP-21 reauthorization, which is the transportation, which, for those who have been paying attention, we're going to run out of money in the trust fund for roads, transportation trust fund in August. So I don't know what's going to be done there. We look to the feds, but who knows? We had an open discussion with the Bureau of Land Management and the Forest Service Liaisons. We had updates regarding federal land managers, the land grant institutions. We talked about payment in lieu of taxes, which expires, which is mainly, it doesn't affect our county as much, we have very little. Bureau of Land Management, mainly down south, definitely in areas like Nevada and Utah, Arizona, New Mexico. And then we concentrate more on the revenue sharing payments to forests and counties, which is the SRS, which the last payment has gone out. While it was in the President's budget to allow for that, it still takes some enabling legislation, and it takes offsets, and those have not yet been identified. That is, we've said it before, and it seems like we pull rabbits out of the hat every year with those relationships at WIR and NACO. But that is about $1 million to our road department, as well as $1 million to schools. And then, of course, there's road and bridge funding on top of that. And without going too far into anything else, it is time to have public comment. And so I would invite members of the public to address the board on any issue which is within the purview of this board. If it's on the agenda already, I might ask you to hold your comments until it is discussed at that time. But is there a sign-up sheet, or what are we doing here? And I'd ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. If somebody has said what you want to say, just say, yeah, like him or her. Please.
Craig Bradford.
My name is Craig Bradford. I'm the Public Affairs Representative for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for Del Norte County. Mr. Chairman, rather than hold my comments till later, if I could just do this now. On May 5th, the U.S. Supreme Court upheld a centuries-old tradition of offering prayers to open government meetings, no matter what religion a given prayer represented. The court's pivotal decision was based in large part on the history of legislative prayer dating back to the framers of the Constitution. The majority of justices ruled that opening local government meetings with sectarian prayers does not violate the Constitution, as long as no religion is advanced or disparaged and residents aren't coerced. In their ruling, the justices stated that the alternatives are worse, meaning when government officials and courts act as supervisors and censors of religious speech, or when they declare all such prayers unconstitutional. Justice Anthony Kennedy wrote, and I quote, "As a practice that has long endured, legislative prayer has become part of our heritage and tradition, part of our expressive idiom, similar to the Pledge of Allegiance, inaugural prayer, or the recitation of 'God save the United States' in this honorable court at the opening of this court's sessions." Close quote. So we join hands here this morning as a collection of church representatives, pastors, a very special parish priest who apparently couldn't be here this morning, to encourage you to set the example in Del Norte County by starting your public meetings with both a prayer and the usual Pledge of Allegiance. The special districts and hopefully the city will likely follow suit.
Thank you. Next.
Bruce Barber.
Chairman Finnegan and Board of Supervisors. My name is Bruce Barber. I'm a resident of Gasky. Two of you know me on a first name and somewhat personal basis, and both of you know me as a man of faith. It is this faith and my trust in God that urges me to petition this board to discuss and consider opening these board meetings with a simple prayer to God, asking for guidance, strength, courage, wisdom. In my church, during each service, the entire congregation petitions the Lord with certain specific requests. A common prayer is that God provide our government leaders with the wisdom and courage to make proper and correct decisions that are in the best interest of the people they are elected to serve. That prayer request extends directly to this board. I know that as I speak, some of you might have already thought the words separation of church and state. In fact, those words do not appear in the Constitution, including the Bill Rights. The First Amendment wording includes prohibits the making of any law respecting and establishment of religion, impeding the free exercise of religion. So on one hand, government can impose a particular religion, while on the other hand, they cannot prohibit the free exercise of all religions. There is no reference to separation of state and church. In fact, the Declaration of Independence refers to God and the Creator. Our country was not founded in an absence of our recognized God. This month, as mentioned, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in the decision of Town of Greece versus Galloway that a town's practice of beginning each legislative session with prayer does not violate the establishment cause of the First Amendment. Some of you right now may have a troubled resisting voice rising up within you as I speak. Believe me, I know the feeling when a pastor starts a sermon, and I feel like he has suddenly singled me out and is speaking directly to me. Well, I am addressing this petition directly to each of you. Please do the proper thing as your heart tells you. Please have the courage to resist the struggle of political correctness. Please take the time as a board to discuss and consider the request to open each meeting with a simple prayer, and allow all denominations in faith to become involved and surrender your pride to God. Do this by requesting His assistance in help, strength, courage, and wisdom. I'd like to add that there are many variations of faith and religion. In my opinion, one specific type is atheism, and that religious belief is the denial of an existing God. It would be my opinion that this board, by refusing to acknowledge God in prayer, you're in fact discriminating against many faiths while displaying your silent support of one faith.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
And that is atheism. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next, please.
Don Amador.
Don Amador with the Blue Ribbon Coalition. Just a couple items. Want to encourage the board to not give up on trying to restore some historic OHV use out at the Talawa Dunes. I know the Coastal Commission is not very favorable on that particular activity, but it is a legal activity according to the 1982 interim management plan out at Talawa Dunes State Parks. Also, don't forget about maybe looking at some county, developing a county OHV park out there to provide some opportunities for the residents here. Also want to continue to encourage the county to work on a modified Alternative Six to the travel management rule, and that that modified, those modified tenants capture the tone and direction and spirit of those collaborative groups that we had here a few years ago. So I know the local Jeep club is working on ground truthing some of those routes, and I think we have new leadership here at the forest. So I'm optimistic and hopeful that we can resolve this at some point in time and move forward, just like the Shasta Trinity, who had a travel management plan that was not well-accepted by the board and users. But they were able to move on by doing some post-subpart B projects with the county and user groups. So that's what I hope we see up here. So thank you for working on that.
Thank you. Next, please.
Marlo Thompson.
I'm Marlo Thompson. I'd like to go back to what the first two gentlemen were saying about starting off with a word of prayer. Our founding fathers did give us a direction that the country should go. And that is that it's based on religious freedom, which gives us freedom in all other areas. And I'd like to just quote a few of the founding fathers, what they said. And I got this from the Wall Builders webpage in the Issues and Articles section. And the founder of Wall Builders is a pastor and a historian, especially on the founding fathers. He has thousands of documents that are original. So he has a lot of information that is worth looking at. So I'd like to just quote a few of what the founding fathers said. Here's Samuel Huntington. He says, "It becomes a people publicly to acknowledge the overruling hand of divine providence and their dependence upon the supreme being as their creator and merciful preserver." And these founding fathers did believe in public prayer. George Washington on the battlefield prayed for guidance and for strength in overcoming the British at that time, and he was not bashful in praying in public. Here's another one, Jedidiah Morris. "All efforts made to destroy the foundations of our holy religion ultimately tend to the subversion also of our political freedom and happiness." And we can see our country, and I'm 76, and I've seen our country go downhill real fast. And one prime reason is because we've taken God out of our public life and put Him on a Sunday pedestal somewhere else. So I think we need to acknowledge that we do have a supreme being, and He should be acknowledged in our public forums. And we should start off with prayer so that we know that we are not the supreme being in this universe. God is. One other one I'd like to just quickly quote, and I'll be wrapping it up. "The only means of establishing and perpetuating our republican forms of government is the universal education of our youth in the principles of Christianity by means of the Bible." And that was by Benjamin Rush. So with that, I'd like to just ask the board here to consider very strongly to start off not only with the Pledge of Allegiance that we have already, but also to include God in the opening of our services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Pless Fowler.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Pless Fowler, and mine is a blight issue. I've lived in this county for 63 years. I have lived at the property at 270 Cummins Road for 63 years. I have been speaking with Roger Gitlin and helped him with his bite on blight with the Wild Rivers Grants for Jordan Recovery and the Daily Bread, and Nick at Walmart and Fish and Game, whom my family used to own the property back in there behind the Workforce Center. I recently got blighted. I leave occasionally to go out of town for work. I used to be the head sawyer for Miller Edwood Company. They shut down. In my period of being gone, I've had people come in, drop different pieces of vehicles, et cetera. They have also driven over my septic tank and crushed it. I have been blighted on April 5th. I have complied with the registered letters, et cetera. My neighborhood is a drug neighborhood. My neighbors do not like me. I am not liked. My daughter does not want to live there, and I have complied with everything. I have recently got a new notice of a nuisance and abatement court. 99% of the abatements have been cleaned up, except for one building, which I was told that I could not repair, that I could not make into a studio apartment. It has changed. I have 30 days to get a permit. My brother-in-law, Carl Wood, who lived at 900 Pebble Beach Drive, who sold his property to Bill Gray, attorney, has, in closed session with Dave Mason, has proposed a plan. I have proposed a plan. I have asked Dave Mason, code enforcement officer, to inspect my neighbors, who are drug dealers, and go down my road and look at the blight down there. I am going to put myself in pro per with affiliation with an attorney, reason being that I cannot get public information of the people who are turning me in or what is happening All of, I would like possibly for Jerry Hemmingson and Roger Gitlin to come to my house. Reason being, in the recent report of the nuisance and abatement, it has been said that there is no change. There has been 99% of this cleaned up. There's 1% that...
Let me ask you to wrap it up, please.
1% that needs to be repaired, and it will be repaired within 30 days. So I'm asking that, and I would like to ask Mark McClure how far the Coastal Commission goes inland. What is the mileage?
It's the first major highway. So you're, well, maybe...
I live behind Walmart.
There's a place where it reaches out...
Elk Creek, Greenwich.
Elk Creek, David Greenwich.
But I'm going to ask you two to converse over this a little later, and I'm glad that you asked the supervisors to attend. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Next, please.
Sparky Countess.
Chairman, Supervisor, I'm Sparky Countess. Here on behalf of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1381, Commander Jerry Johnson, elected officers, I'm here to say that we totally support prayer prior to public meeting, especially the supervisors and other ones in the county that may follow. But I do have a little, the board de chair, I'd like to read, maybe appropriate, maybe not be, but anyway, it says, "Heavenly Father, thank you for holding our troops in your loving hands. Thank you for protecting them as they protect us. Thank you for blessing them and their families for their selfless acts they perform for us every day. For all these things and more, I am so gratefully men. God bless America." Thank you. And I want to thank Supervisor Roger Gitlin, Supervisor Gary Hemmingson, for attending the memorial services we had yesterday. We missed you three, so shame on you.
Don't judge that you don't know. Next, please.
Vicki Stamps.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to come to the meeting. My name is Vicki Stamps. I'm a 24-year resident of this county. It's my understanding that the Supreme Court has decided that non-denominational prayer before a governmental meeting is constitutional. Yet, when our Del Norte County Supervisor Roger Gitlin asked the chairman to put that concept for a non-denominational prayer to open up the supervisors' meeting onto the agenda, when according to bylaws and protocol, it can be put on once the chair had been approached about it. I understand the item was refused for today's agenda. Am I being discriminated about because I believe in prayer opposed to those who are not? Is this a form of harassment? I've been wondering. My big question is this: With all that is going on to change and distract us from that which is right and good in our world, why do we continue to shove our creator out of it? I would applaud it being seriously considered and hoping it would be voted on and accepted unanimously. I deplore the fact it was apparently felt unworthy of acceptance as part of this agenda. I'm sick to death of everyone, being afraid we will offend someone. Well, folks, I'm offended myself that this issue is not on today's agenda, whatever the rationale for such reaction was. If I don't want to hear something like a non-denominational prayer, I can sure put my hands over my ears or stick my fingers in them. I can leave the room if I don't like what's being said. I can complain. Our country is based on faith and prayer. I am nearly 74 years old, and what I'm seeing happen all over my country gives me cause to worry about what our future will be for the children who follow our footsteps. I'd love to see this issue of non-denominational prayer be put on the next agenda for our vote. And I hope people will come and fill this room to overflow and make their voices heard, though we don't lose another right. Thank you. I apologize for my speech. I only have 34% of my lungs, and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Victoria Dickie.
Hi, I'm Victoria Dickie. I live in the county. I had wonderful things to say, but they weren't near... I had wonderful things to say, but they weren't nearly as well stated as the prior speakers who have asked that the prayer be put on the agenda and that you vote on it. In case you wonder, I believe that there should be a prayer. I think I'm the one that brought up the fact that for quite a while I didn't see the Pledge of Allegiance being said at all the public meetings. The second thing that came up that I thought was interesting, I have three points, that was number one, and first and most important. The second is Sutter Coast Hospital doesn't want anything to do with us. You're kidding yourselves. When you get one party to a contract who ain't interested anymore, time to let them go. Domain them out, do whatever you have to do, but keep the services here that we need. This is not just, can we avoid a lawsuit? Can we avoid this or that? This is how do we keep good medical services here? Without those, we just flat-out don't have anything to draw older people here or keep them here. Mr. Finnegan stated that we have the highest poverty level in the nation in California.
For children.
For children. Well, of course, their parents have come here because they can get good welfare. I attended a church down in Santa Rosa when I was down there, and we had people who came in, and they came from all over the country because they could have their children here, they could go to school here. The minute they were done and would be productive members of society theoretically, they moved back to where they came from. So I think that you are making it too easy for people to get welfare here in California. I'm all for feeding people who need help, but I see a lot of people who are every bit as able-bodied as I am, every bit as able-bodied as my husband is, and they tell me they're thinking about having a headache next week. Well, I'm sorry. I live with headaches. I know what they are. I know what debilitating headaches are. I know what it is to have twelve to fifteen shots per month, to be coherent, and you work every day. Why? Because that's what productive members of society do. No one has come to my door and said, "Can I sweep your walk? Can I help you?" In all the ten years that we've been here, one man was passing by and said, "If I mow your lawn, will you give me some money?" So we gave him the money, didn't want him to mow the lawn because he had a little kid. But anyway, bear that in mind. My time's up. Bye.
Thank you. Next, please.
Larry Reed.
Mr. Finnegan, I think you said if other people had all-
If you would announce-
Oh, I'm sorry. You had said if other-
If you would state your name, please.
Larry Reed, sorry. You had said that if you just agree with the other people, just say, "I'm in agreement with the other people that's here." But I do want to make one plea to you guys on this subject of prayer. I really appreciate your guys' service that you do. I know for myself, I'm a pastor at a local church here, and I know how hard it is to try and do the job at hand and to bear the shoulders, the responsibility of those shoulders on your shoulders that's here. By having prayer, it gives us all hope and gives us an opportunity to be able to, you stated yourself, that you weren't sure what was going to happen when the funds ran out. God does, and it's one of those things, it gives us all an opportunity to be able to rely and have hope and just to go forward, and I just want to state that. I hope that you guys will consider that. I think this nation was founded on that, and I think that it's something that we could all benefit from. Thank you for your time.
Next, please.
Paul Yang.
Good morning. My name is Paul Joseph Yang. I'm a Macon American, and it is such a great honor to be here this morning to speak to you regarding about prayers. I want to give you a little bit of background about who I am. Originally, my family, we came from the country of Laos. My father was a major in the Mo Army, fighting for the Americans during the Vietnamese-American War. And one of my father's responsibilities was to go and rescue an American pilot when they were shot down in the Jungle of Laos. An American soldier went into South Vietnam, the Americans during the bug-up fighting in South Vietnam, and the Mo, because of the Ho Chi Minh Trail that went from northern part of Laos, from North Vietnam to the northern part of Laos to South Vietnam, so the Mo was stopping the Ho Chi Minh Trail. And my father and my family, we were a part of that war. I remember when the communists took over the country of Laos, my grandmother, you know, we would escape Laos, crossing the Mekong River into the concentration camps in Thailand. Why do we escape the country of Laos? Because of religious persecution, because our freedom was taken away. But, you know, coming to America as an American citizen, when I hear that we do not have prayer in public places, that worries me. Why did I escape Laos to come to America? And come to America was not freely. We want that well because my father was a major in the Mo Army, then you can come to America. It took us four years in the concentration camps in Thailand until there was a sponsor in America that sponsored my family so we can come to America. And so here in America, when I hear about no prayers in public places, that worries me. As a religious man, I also serve Smith River United Methodist Church, United Methodist Church of the Clamens. We have Mo, we have European American, we have Hispanic American, we have Native American within our two congregations. And so I urge you to look into prayer and to give us an opportunity to come, to walk beside you, to pray for you, to empower you, to see what we can do to support you, particularly to have, you know, the great Creator to come and help us. And so thank you for your time, and I applaud you for all the hard work that you are doing and for this community. Thank you, and thanks be to God.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mike Wiley.
My name is Mike Wiley, and I stand with those that have come in favor of prayer before we begin our decisions here, and sometimes I find that if I pray for guidance ahead of time, I don't have to pray for forgiveness later. So, and sometimes, and I want to, I stand with those that say, "Thank you for your service." I know sometimes it's difficult to be in that position to make decisions, you're going to offend somebody, no matter which way you move. But I love the premise of this country, the freedom that we have to believe or not believe, and we know it was established because of persecution. People just wanted to live and believe without being persecuted. And I grew up in a family where my father was atheist, my mother was Christian, we lived next door to Jewish family on one side and Catholic on the other. And when everybody was talking, I know sometimes you get a little bit like defensive if you disagree with the idea that you should pray before you hold meetings or do anything if it's not your belief system. But it reminded me of, my sister was sick a lot, and one day, the Jewish lady next door, Rita, brought a bowl of chicken noodle soup. I know this sounds almost cliché, but she said, "You know, it's for your daughter." And she goes, "It may not help, but it couldn't hurt." And I kind of feel like that. If you don't agree, well, you don't have to, you don't have to do what I did, you don't have to say, "I agree." You can just say, "Okay, that's you." Thank you.
Next, please.
Russ Green.
I'm Pastor Russ Green of Pelican Bay Magialco Free Church, and I have these words to say. I would first like to say thank you to Supervisor Gitlin this morning for extending the invitation to my fellow pastors and I to come and address the Board of Supervisors regarding the reintroduction of a brief time of prayer by local clergy or interested laypeople as a regular part of the supervisors' meeting agendas. And I would like to thank the entire Board of Supervisors for the opportunity to speak to you on this important matter. I want the best for you and from you. As a result, I pray for you privately and regularly as an individual. I enjoin my congregation to pray for you publicly and privately as a matter of conviction and practice. It seems to me fitting that we resolve as a community to acknowledge the preeminent place that God commands in human affairs. We should once more offer prayer to the one to whom we all must give an account at the start of every Board of Supervisors meeting. And now, with the Supreme Court upholding the practice of having sectarian prayers as a regular feature of local, state, and national political sessions, I would ask the Delmar County Board of Supervisors to allow this practice to resume in its meetings. My colleagues in ministry, regardless of denomination or religious affiliation, stand ready to offer prayers to the Almighty on your behalf and for the good of our community. Thank you once again, supervisors, for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the faith community. May you experience the blessing and peace of God. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know it wasn't planned, but two different religions, same tie. Garcia, good job. Next, please. I know. Anybody else? Okay, anybody else that wasn't on the list, chair choose to comment in public? No? Okay. So I'm going to give you a brief answer, since this was orchestrated. I guess, first of all, it was mentioned the reintroduction of prayer, and also praying to God, asking the Lord's help. The Supreme Court, we don't do everything that the Supreme Court says is okay around here. Quite frankly, you'd go bonkers if we did. The Supreme Court ruled five to four in New York, situation where it upheld the custom and culture of those organizations to continue with their prayer. California's a little more restrictive as far as their constitution and sectarianism. What the issue here is, is this board, this community, has always been silent, as our custom and culture, rather than having vocal prayer. When I took under consideration, part of the job of the chair is not only to run the meetings and try to maintain decorum, but also have a feel for the members of the Board of Supervisors, especially the majority. Sometimes, it's four to one without taking a vote. But to try to navigate that, the meeting and the work that we do focusing on the business of the board, and trying to avoid that would compromise the integrity of the board or put us all in an embarrassing situation. It is not as easy, and so when you go to the issue of prayer, I don't think anybody, I'm not going to judge anybody, believes more in the power of prayer than me, from the day I was first baptized till this morning, prior to the meeting. I use it all the time on a daily basis. That's not what this is about. What this is about is trying to avoid the slippery slope that you are not recognizing when we open it up to prayer before meeting. As a compromise, which I have done in the past as chair, not on a regular basis, but have agendized it now at eight-thirty for a moment of reflection or prayer, silent, albeit silent, and there's a reason for that. And there's also a reason to do it at eight-thirty because some of the most important business that we do and some of the biggest challenges we face are in closed session. And so why would we want to exclude that from the power of prayer? We've always had the opportunity to pray in our office. We do it on Sundays, we do it on Saturdays, we do it whenever. But when you say non-denominational prayer, it isn't that easy. You have to deal with the agnostics, the atheists, Seventh-day Adventists, Latter-day Saints. It's not just Episcopalians, Lutherans, Catholics, and the Jewish. It's also our Native American brethren who do open their meetings with prayer. It is the satanic worshippers. It is the Rastafarians who would advocate to smoke pot before the meeting, okay? I could go on and on and on. It's the Shiites, it's the Buddhists, it's the Muslims. There are some prayers that you would find extremely offensive to some of the conditions that you just cited, that the foundation of this country was found. There are those religions that would advocate against your religious freedom, at least as you see it. So that's why this board will at eight-thirty have a moment of reflection and prayer, as they see fit. I would invite any of you and all of you to join. Thank you. And with that, we're going to go to a ten-thirty timed item.
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized, please?
I think you just were, but go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I can't think of anything more I disagree with than what I just heard. I'm absolutely astounded. Here we are, we have members of the clergy here in our audience, who I've invited, yes, I did invite them, I'm very proud. I don't know how my other colleagues sit on this. I would ask that it be discussed. I will ask that this be in open session, a prayer discussed at our next June thirteenth meeting. I have the right to do that.
You have the right to do it, and you have, with consultation with the chair, and we will-
Well, I have. And I have consulted, and consulting, for those of you who don't know what it means, means advising.
Correct.
It's not asking for a retroactive "I disagree with you." Otherwise, we wouldn't get anything on the agenda, just because the chairman happens to disagree with it. So I'm going to ask that it be placed, according to Del Norte County Manual, one point one oh, point oh-one-oh. Any member of the board may place an item on the agenda for action after first consulting with the chairperson of our board, and that would be you, Chairman Finnegan, that I ask this to be put on the June thirteenth ballot, excuse me, the June thirteenth meeting, and that we have this ordinance be created, not unlike the city of Eureka, which has just reimplemented its invocation as a result of this Supreme Court case. Modark County does a prayer before its open session, so does Siskiyou. We have lots of good examples. Sacramento, you know very well, Sheriff Finnegan, they do a prayer in the Assembly, and they do a prayer in the Senate, and in our own nation's capital. It's good enough for the rest of the country. I say let's have an open prayer here and make it non-denominational so that it's inclusive. So I will ask that be put on the June thirteenth.
For now, it's on the agenda at eight-thirty, and I will continue to consult with board members, as well as staff, as well as council, as well as community members. Now to our ten-thirty item. Ten-thirty item that it's, the ten-thirty item is to read and introduce an ordinance to the county of Del Norte, adding chapter three point zero seven to title three of the Del Norte County Code, imposing a transaction or sales and use tax for the purpose of funding the Del Norte County Fairgrounds for a period of seven years, as requested by the Del Norte County Fair Manager. Is there somebody that is here to present on that item?
Counselor Rice is here.
Is Martha Rice here?
Yeah.
There you are.
Making my way up.
And you can go ahead and wait till people are paying attention.
The fair manager couldn't be here today, so I'm here to answer any questions. What we're asking the county to do is to pass an ordinance which would place a transactions and use tax of point two-five percent, which is equal to twenty-five cents on every hundred dollars. By passing, it's called a transactions and use tax, but it is basically a sales tax that applies to everything that the current state sales and use tax applies to. The revenues from this tax would go towards funding the Del Norte County Fair, and while the county would need to pass the ordinance, it will have to go to the voters in November, and it will have to be passed by a two-thirds vote. But first, it must be adopted as an ordinance by the Board of Supervisors. Currently, it's set to be a seven-year tax. This was a condition of approval that this sales, or special sales tax measure be passed by LAFCO, and the revenues are specifically restricted to be used for the Del Norte County Fairgrounds and the presentment of the annual fair. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from board members?
I think the question I'd had earlier was just the process as to, you know, the folks, basically, we need to have, this is a funding mechanism that needs to be in place once the voters, if the-
And we just ran into this with some of our TOT that didn't pass, so we had to rescind, but it had to be in place in order to get on the ballot.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other member of the Fair Board wants to weigh in on this, or let's, I'll tell you what, let's ask for a motion, so we can open up the discussion. Can I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Members of the public, would you like to weigh in on this?
All taxes are temporary. They're gonna get bigger, they're gonna last longer. You've got spending problems, guys. Sorry, I don't think you have an income problem. We are the highest taxed place in the nation. Every chart that I see about quality of life, California is either forty-nine or fifty. Of course, we had the state of Jefferson, we might have a fifty-one, then we would've moved up the ladder. All that being said, you're gonna pass it, because it's an increase in tax, and that's what you do. You drive people out of this area, people who are income-producing leave. And eventually, there's nobody to buy the beer.
Hi, I'm Bob Cochran, I'm a member of the Fair Board. I wanna thank you for your support to this point. I think, prior to your speaker, just kinda missed the point, we're desperate. We are, the state cut off substantial funding, and this isn't something that's being decided today. You're giving the voters of this county an opportunity to decide whether they want the Fair to be there in the future or not. If we don't get this passed, we're looking at a, what, one more year, I think, of Fair, and we're broke. So it's, we're desperate, and we appreciate your support to this date, and I'm confident that the voters of the county are gonna back you up on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, and good point regarding who has the vote on this. Next, please.
Good morning, my name's Kevin Hartwick, Delmar County. I just, due to appreciate the fact we're allowed to get to this point, where the voters can make a choice. To echo some comments that have been made over and over again, our look at this is temporary, not permanent. It is an avenue to get to ultimately a community-based solution. We've had many discussions amongst many members of this board, and the ultimate solution is for the community to not only fund, but own this particular site. That will be a goal, it will not be lost, because some temporary funding is found. It's also not looked upon, we take this with, we take it very seriously, that the community would be making an investment in this. The communication will be from the Fair Board to the newly-elected group, that the process is to look to long-term strategic solutions, not to rely on sales tax. With this step in place, that allows a life, actually, to continue with the fairgrounds, the first and foremost step has always been to find outside investment, and find partners who will allow us to move forward. To answer, the ultimate is, can we do this without this process? The answer is no. And can we do it with the current state situation of how the bureaucracy works? The answer is no. Our hope is, in the next seven to twelve years, that we will able, be able to address that, and move on to positive income streams from outside investment. So I appreciate that, and we take this issue very seriously.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Kara Miller, I'm the honor of being the President of the Fair Board this year, and I echo my fellow directors. And I just wanna kinda not say it all over again, but the thing I wanna stress is, we all gotta remember that the Fair is not just about the fair time. The whole Fair is throughout the year, our community using the facility, you know, whether it's from childcare council, to the farmer's market, to emergency services, you know, that fairground is very important. The Fair is a big part of it, because it's all about our families, and the structures, and I mean, there's just so many intertwining things. And all this does is give the voters of Delmar County a chance to say yes or no. So that's all this is about, and I'm, and I hope you support it today, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Nobody else, I'm gonna bring, oh, got one here.
My name is Bledsoe Fowler, I am in support of the Fair. Reason being, I've been here sixty-three years, and our children need it one, and there is a large income that comes in, in those three days. And again, like Kara said, that, those buildings are used for different reasons, and they're trying very hard to get money to sustain the Fair. I'm aware that the state has cut them off, but I've even tried to help Mr. Hatfield with different events. And so, yes, it should be voted on. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right, back to the Board, then.
You know, I do, I do think it's worth noting, and this is to answer Vicki's question, I mean, this is a procedural thing we have to have, and the voters are the ones ultimately to make the decision whether this goes in place or not. Having said that, I think it's a really important process, I've been, you know, I participated as a kid, as a parent, as a community member, and to take the worst-case scenario, you had a closed-down fairgrounds, that's gonna become a terribly blighted property, and if you think the state doesn't deal with enough stuff up here as it is, they're really gonna neglect that. So I, I agree that, as Mr. Hartwick said, I think going forward, that at some point, if there's some ownership of that land locally, now who owns it, whether it's county, JPA, or whatever, I think that really, in the long term, is the best fix, is that we could do it locally, better than having to deal with the state bureaucracies, as well as their rules and regulations, so.
Anybody else?
Again, Vicki, I just wanna address your question, the Fair would not end in twenty sixteen, twenty fourteen, that would not be our last Fair. There's enough money, and Kevin confirmed this up, to go through twenty sixteen in our present model, twenty sixteen. Right, and at this point, we have to make arrangements. I don't like taxes any more than anybody else. I think it's punitive, it's hurtful, but this is a temporary one, and the alternative is worse. And I agree with Supervisor Sullivan when he says it would end up a blighted area, and we have enough of that here in our community. We need to protect this Fair, and we need to find alternative sources of partnership in this. And I know you're gonna do this, Kevin, and your group, and I know that's gonna be your priority. And just for the record, it needs a two-thirds vote to pass, so you're aware of that. Thank you.
And part of the issue with the Fair, too, is this isn't the only thing, this is a piece of the puzzle, there's efforts going on in Sacramento with the Governor, I know Amador County is a heck of a partner on this, to try to, the state, if they're not gonna fund it, they need to release it to local control. Who's gonna be responsible for the maintenance of the buildings, things like that? So that's another component that we're working on, through CSAC and through individual efforts. But there is a motion on the floor, as made by Supervisor Gitlin and seconded by Supervisor Sullivan, an ordinance of the Board of Supervisors for the county of Delmar, State of California, adding chapter three point zero seven to title three of the Delmar County Code, imposing a transaction or sales and use tax for the purpose of funding the Delmar County Fairgrounds for a period of seven years. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes. It is unanimous. I'm gonna go to the consent item, please. Consent agenda, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull item seven before we move forward on that, Chair.
Okay. So, motion on the consent agenda, minus item seven?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, public comment. Okay, back to the Board. Without any corrections, we'll note that the minutes of May thirteenth were accurate, even though they were not necessarily truthful. Poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes, number seven.
I'm sorry, I need to recuse myself on item number twelve and number fourteen.
Okay, duly noted by the Clerk. And number seven, Supervisor Gitlin, you pulled that?
Yes, I did. Zach, I see you're here, I wonder if you could maybe approach the dais, I could ask a couple of questions about this. And I read through the narrative, and I saw the objectives of the report. Zach, does this DITSON technology differentiate between fish species, salmon, chinook, steelhead, for that matter, any other fish species?
Good morning, Supervisors. Does it differentiate between species?
Can you tell the difference between a, does the DITSON technology tell the difference between a steelhead, a chinook, a salmon, or a mudsucker, anything?
You can differentiate based on size. Chinook, salmon are the larger species. The accuracy of this technology is about to a centimeter. Other than that, it is the shape of a fish, but we're also using other means of separating species and apportioning species, and that is by past Angler survey and current Angler survey data, the red surveys that are being conducted by the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the known run timing of species. But in general, you get an entire look at the anadromous fish run, that includes chinook salmon, coho salmon, and steelhead. We've also detected some sturgeon, that in two thousand and ten, we actually had one sturgeon, and, and that was based on its size. We also can detect marine mammals, and their abundance, and their timing, and also, I'll leave it at that, but they are still working on tail breed frequencies and other means of trying to differentiate between species. We have two high-resolution images that, or resolution lenses that will also help to determine, to help attempt to differentiate these species, but...
Okay, my other question is, doesn't the National Marine Fisheries Services require ten consecutive years of fish observations, or the studies, to be validated?
I don't work for the National Marine Fisheries Service.
That's my understanding, and how many have you done consecutively? How many?
Three.
Any other questions?
I just have one, is there a better, more efficient means at this time, on a way of counting fish?
Uh, no. Thank you.
Moved to approve.
So moved, can I get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, public comment, back to the Board, poll the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan, excuse me, Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure? Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes. And just for the record, that was to approve a grant from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, in an effort to continue counting the salmon and steelhead fish in the Smith River.
I'd like to vote yes, I'm not also.
Oh, Supervisor Hemmingson would like to vote. Do you wanna record your vote?
I think she got it.
Okay, good. Budget transfers, eighteen through twenty. Can I get a motion on budget transfer oh five oh four, oh five oh five, and oh five oh six, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, public comment, back to the Board, poll the vote, please.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes. We're gonna jump to item twenty-seven, which is review and discuss the Bay Meadows offered as made by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, as requested by the airport director, number twenty-seven. Do we have a mic for you, Jim? We'll get a... All right, I'll tell you what, while we're waiting for that, let's bump back to a, number twenty-six, which is direct staff, Community Development Department, to research unpaved county roads that may have been designated as non-highway or combined use, as requested by Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yes, thank you. We have the opportunity to take our gravel roads and designate them as non-highway for uses of off-highway vehicles, as well as on-highway vehicles, so it's like a combined-use type of thing. These are on county roads, county gravel roads. I know Don Amador is here, if he would like to speak on this. I know other counties have successfully implemented this program, and have done very well with it, so I'm hopeful that we can do the same thing. I'd certainly like staff to look into it, and make sure that it will work for our counties.
And so just a point of information on this, we're just looking to, wanna vote, or just direction?
No, it'd be to...
Just direction.
By consensus to direct staff, consensus is there.
Okay. And bring it back to us. Don, if you wanna say something?
Sure, just a couple of quick words, Don Amador with the Blue Ribbon Coalition. Had the privilege to go out with some of the local access interests yesterday, we toured ninety miles, both south and north of Highway one ninety-nine, toured a number of the non-paved county roads out there, feel that it's a great, you know, recreational opportunity to bring some tourism to this area. I continually get calls, and I know folks up here do, too, as people in Redding and other places, where can I come up and take my ATV, or side-by-side, my family has these vehicles, our club wants to come up and do a club run, do you have anything up that we can come over to, particularly on the coast? Well, so far, the answer's been no, for up here. California Legislature, in its wisdom, not always that wise, but here, I think they were, has given the county a chance to be part of the travel management decision-making process, not just leave everything to the Forest Service. They've empowered the county to be part of this, to be part of the solution. So there's the combined use, as you've noted, that's for the county designating their paved county roads, for its combined use for segments up to three miles. Then for your non-paved roads, Plumas County and some others have done this, you can designate them as non-highways. Besides bringing some recreational opportunity, and helping the Forest Service connect up some of their trails, this unit's uniquely situated where it's dependent on county roads to hook up the trail opportunities that the Forest Service has. I remember Mary Kay quite often saying, petitioning the county, we didn't know these codes existed, but petitioning, you guys, come in and be part of this, help designate some of your roads, so we can make this thing work. Now with new leadership, I'm real optimistic. So, closing, I think one of the benefits it does bring to the county is the state OHV grant program. Now that you will be providing, hopefully, green sticker opportunities, you can apply for law enforcement grants, some maintenance grants, because you're providing an opportunity and a benefit to the green sticker users. Lastly, would encourage the county or staff to go out with the new district ranger, look at, hopefully, you're gonna get an extension, thirty or sixty days, on the travel management rule, give you time to go out with him, maybe the new forest supervisor from Eureka, go out and look at some of this stuff. Site-specific analysis, site-specific reviews, critically important, so would encourage you, maybe, to have that outreach. Then I'll just close by giving, actually, Plumas County ordinance, they've done that a few years ago, I heard it's been a raving success, people love it, providing some tourism. Thank you.
Could you make that available to us, Don?
Yes, I'll just...
Give that to Heidi, right over there in the corner.
Well, Jay was raising his hand.
Don, I had a question.
She'll give it to Jay.
Don, I have a question for you. In Plumas, when they determined them to be non-highway?
Yes.
Were they still able to use state and federal dollars for maintenance?
Yeah, that doesn't change, doesn't change anything but allowing the green sticker vehicles to use the road, it doesn't change anything, it's just terminology.
So we can still use our road dollars?
Yeah, your road dollars, yeah, it doesn't change anything.
Okay, good, thank you, Don.
But I know at the state level, that's the reason they had the big surplus in state parks, is there's a ton of green sticker money there.
Yeah.
So I think it's a great idea.
Okay, well, unless I hear something different, then I would like to direct staff to research this, take a look at the Plumas, and bring us back an action item. Okay? Good. Yeah. Let's go to twenty-seven now, to review and discuss the Bay Meadows offered made by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, as requested by the airport director. Jim, you're up.
At this point, we're just looking for direction, just staff to work out any conditions you may have, and to see if you're interested in the property after the airport has owned it for five years.
Okay, so if I can summarize, the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority has identified some portions of Bay Meadow to do some wetland remediation on, however, it has to be under the... However, it has to be under the, a government entity to maintain or to guarantee this is going to stay in that condition?
Right.
And fishing game has declined, so you need another governmental entity?
Right, a responsible government entity.
Okay, and that's what your request of this board here is. Questions?
No, I think that I just, I needed a little more information on than the packet that we were given in, or the lack of packet that we were putting on the agenda. It makes sense to me.
Okay, any other questions?
I would just have a suggestion, that many times, offers to dedicate, you can hold an offer to dedicate for about twenty-five years, but agree to do it. In case something goes awry, or in case there's a reason that, in case this property is not part of the mitigation. So you could hold it as mitigation if you did your offer to dedicate and extended it out to the twenty-five-year period. Not that we wouldn't, but once that offer is there, that meets the standard. Because I assume that that's what this is, is a mitigation exchange. And then that also gives the entity that's acquiring the property to make a plan, like if there's going to be any trailheads, or if there's going to be any interpretive use of the property, or what it's going to do, so you can extend it.
Sure.
Thanks.
So just to be clear. You know, just after the wetlands have been created and monitored for five years by Border Coast at the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority's expense, into the satisfaction of the regulatory agencies involved in the RSA improvement project, it would then go to the county?
That's correct.
Okay. Sure. Public comment? Okay, back to the board, can I get a motion on this?
Is this, this just says review and discuss, is this an action?
A direction to staff.
Okay.
All right, we'd like some direction to sit down with the airport authority and CDD and get the maps out, take a look at it, do our due diligence, so that we know what we're working with when we report back to the board, as well as the long-term effects of that.
Okay, but we should be very clear that the willingness of the board to accept this is the direction, rather than putting it in limbo, which means that, under, maybe this wasn't framed correctly, but the alternative to not accept placing it. The RSA, not accepting the land and placing the RSA project in a holding pattern until some other agency is identified. So I think by consensus, we need to hear whether this board wants to accept this, this land as part of that mitigation package.
Yes, it's eighty-two point oh four acres.
Right, and so by consensus, if we were willing to accept it, direct staff to prepare the proper paperwork that would satisfy the government entities, as well as the Border Coast to move forward with the runway safety extension.
Now you keep changing your terminology, because at first you said want, and then you said willing. Because I gotta go against the want, but I would go for the willing.
Chairman, perhaps I need some clarification as to the timing of this. Is the RSA project in jeopardy if we don't accept this today?
This is a condition of Army Corps permitting, and yes.
Is this tied to the bonding?
No.
Okay.
Separate-
So it's just asking for a responsible government entity to-
In our EAR, that's what we said we were to do.
Okay.
So do we need to change how this is and just add this as an urgency item? Since it's not worded as an action item? Today it's direction, because the understanding was that it wasn't indicative of having to have the property today, it was to actually sit down and understand it before we did it. But if it is an urgency item, then I would ask that it be placed-
Jeanine, can I ask you, in talking with the Army Corps of Engineers, what are they requiring and when?
Well, I believe there's got to be a conservation easement, right?
Yes, in the transfer, yes.
And I'm also applying for an environmental enhancement protection grant. And that grant's deadline is June thirtieth. And in that grant, we're only going for Bay Meadows at this point, because it's the only one that we could possibly purchase and have ownership of before June thirtieth, which is a condition of the grant. It's awarded next March. And part of that is that they're going to want to make sure that some responsible entity is going to take possession of that property and hold it in perpetuity for its intended use, which is preservation.
Well, I'm going to ask that this be brought forward as an emergency item, because I know the way the Army Corps and the other governmental entities act, is they're going to say, well, you have nothing in writing.
I will move to add as an urgency item to the agenda today.
Moved and seconded to add this as an emergency item, which means that it would require action prior to our next meeting.
Well, or we could have it on the next agenda, I think, couldn't we? As exactly specifying what the property is and what its intended use.
Will that be timely enough?
I need it before June thirtieth, but I believe that the agencies know that we're working towards that, and if your willingness, that we're going to have it on your agenda. Would that work, Jim?
Okay, without broaching the emergency issue, since it doesn't require action prior to our next meeting.
I'll withdraw my second.
And if the CAO and staff is clear on the direction of this board to prepare the documents for, so we can take action, would that suffice?
It would, yes.
Yeah, I believe that would. In talking with council, we would prefer to go to the next agenda if it isn't truly going to press up, you know, against a deadline that would make it fail.
And I would rather do that than have a cure and correct.
Is that June tenth, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have the direction, I think we can take care of that.
Very good. Thank you.
Chair, I just want to ask a question of Jim and Jay. So what you're really asking our board is just for direction? You're just asking us to get more information, Jay, is that what you're going to be doing?
Well, the request from the airport authority was to review and discuss. Primarily, now that we've discussed, it appears that there has to be documents for the next meeting at the latest in order to satisfy the needs of the RSA project. And so at that point, there would be a decision that would have to be made by the board.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Let's go to number twenty-three, which is authorize and approve the acceptance of three thousand dollar grant from NOAA's Wish Community Animal Fairness and Safety Program as requested by Emergency Services Manager. Yes, Jim? Jim, if you would step up to the microphone, so you can be a celebrity come Sunday, or Tuesday, or Thursday, or whenever they run this again.
Right, exactly. Jim Buckles, I don't see Cindy here. I just wanted to explain what happened. I'm a member of DART Disaster Animal Response Team. And we had a training from NOAA's Wish for, in an emergency, how to set up shelters. At that time, they sprung it on us, that they were donating three thousand dollars, so that's where it came from. And I would just want to say thank you to them for doing that.
Fantastic, good.
Move to approve?
Second.
So moved to approve, to authorize and approve the acceptance of three thousand dollar grant. Poll the vote please.
Before we poll the vote, before Jim leaves, I just wanted to say, thank you for the volunteer recognition event that you held. Thanks. Thank you.
And before you do poll the vote, I want to ask for public comment. No public comment, back to the board, poll the vote please.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chairman Finnegan?
Number-
Chairman? Cindy isn't here today, but her boss is, so I'll talk for her because she asked me to. Jim had a good explanation of this, but the DART program is off and running, and it is a big focus right now. But Cindy's out of the office today, so it wasn't because she didn't want to be here for the grant, but just to clarify. Before Jim gets out of here, do you, we want to have him say a couple of words as the new ag commissioner, which got appointed today?
If you would care to. Say thank you, we'll say you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, Jim.
All right, number twenty-four, is authorize and approve the candidate grant of public utility easement to the benefit of the Assessor's Parcel, one eighteen four seventy oh two, one eighteen four seventy oh three, and one eighteen zero two zero thirty-three, as well as zero two zero thirty-two.
Mr. County Engineer?
In general, most of these parcels have been using this area to run their utilities for years. And so this formalizes that use. And this is on Williams Drive, and that's private property, it's county property, and, or public property. And so now Big Five is coming in, it wants to do the same thing that all the rest of them have been doing, which is just run that short distance over to the existing public utilities, so to serve their building. And because of some gravity systems, which is drain and sewer, that's the way you have to go. And then the city has their public water back there, and there's power and so on. So that's the request, is just to, like I said, put a PUE in to formalize the use that's been going on in that area.
The question I would have is, I know a lot of other people are doing it. Do we get any money from any of these people for using our land as their easement?
Well-
Or in-kind service?
Well, no. I mean, it's, most roads, most public roads have these utilities and people hook into them all the time, and that's the reason for it. But it just allows things to happen. And a lot of times, people do request money for their easements.
Right, and that's what I guess is what I was getting to, and I know that usually the description is for road and utility purpose, and I'm not familiar whether the utilities have to pay the county to be in the right-of-way or not.
No.
Not normally. If it was a private party, it most definitely would charge them.
Well, for instance, if the power company wants to put power lines in, they use county right-of-ways to do that, city-county right-of-ways. And then if we request that they have to move their things at no charge, because they're in the county right-of-way. And it's in general, the same thing with the city and the water system, and it's for various public use for the community.
So I understand that for public use, and I'm not looking to pinch anybody. But, verse five is not public use.
Big five.
Big five, right, sorry. Got the five right. Would it be appropriate to have an encroachment fee, or a connection fee, or some kind of fee for, to grant them an easement as a private entity for profit, as opposed to a public entity, utility?
I think you certainly can. And, but it certainly is not a fee, it would be a, they'd pay a certain amount of money for the use of that land. To run their stuff across it. It would be, it would be a minimal fee, I would think.
Well, I think so too, and I'm not, I'm looking for somebody else to give me the answer. I mean, I'm thinking out of one side of my head that if we were, if it was in the county, and we were collecting sales tax, then it would benefit the county to give it to them. The county is not going to benefit from sales tax in this. It's my, and I don't want to do something that's inappropriate, but maybe Jerry had a question there too?
Well, I was just going to make the point that this seems to be benefiting a private company or a private individual. And so we're giving up, we're giving up this easement for the benefit of a private party. So as David said, it would only seem appropriate there be some minimal kind of-
Renumeration of some sort.
Practical, I don't know what they do in, do they do this in other areas? Do they?
Well, certainly if it was two private parties, and they wanted to run across. What happens in general is, once you put an easement on a property, then that restricts its use, and that, the value of that property is somewhat less. In this case, it's already a road, so it doesn't really diminish the value of the property. But there is a private company getting a benefit from being able to run over to those utilities, so.
What would be the alternative, yeah, alternative for the private company if this was not available to them?
Well, there's not a good alternative. This is the way all of these properties here, right in that area, they go to that location, and that's, that was developed for that purpose, and so.
And I'm just, don't read too much into it, I'm just information gathering here. Sure.
Hello, I'm Ryan Young, I'm with Stover Engineering, and we're working with Worth Williams Properties, who is developing the site for Big Five to build a store there. And when we started looking into where to hook up infrastructure for water, sewer, drainage, we found that the city owns and maintains several water lines, sewer lines, and storm drain lines on Williams Drive. My only guess is that they assumed it was a public right-of-way when they constructed those utilities, because we found that there were no documented easements for building city infrastructure on county property of record. So Big Five is simply offering to pay for the creation of a public utility easement for infrastructure that already exists, so they can tie into it and be legally covered. The other alternative for them is to build their own water and sewer lines down Highway one oh one to the intersection of Williams Drive. And also to bring power under one oh one through a jack and bore, which would be very costly, since there's already public infrastructure serving several parcels in allocation. It's, it's, it is currently, could be called a prescriptive easement, since the facilities already exist. The county could possibly say the city can't come in there and maintain their facilities anymore, but then you would have a situation where the city would have facilities not maintained. So Big Five is simply asking to tie into publicly-owned facilities where there are currently no easements for them to be there, so, just to clarify.
So would this be a good opportunity to memorialize something with the city for their use of our easement for their utilities for which there is no agreement?
That's what we're doing. We're putting a public utility easement over what currently is being used by the city and by Totem Village and by everybody else.
Should there not be some sort of revenue sharing, be it minimus, with the city for that?
I don't really know.
I mean, they are going to be getting a large amount with Big Five, and perhaps in the future with any other development, hook up off that easement, if it's possible even.
Yeah, I, when, I'm getting into areas I don't understand, but when I, when we had mental health and so on was constructed back in that area, I wouldn't doubt that the facilities were developed, and maybe they were developed by the county at that time, and given to the city, or built by the, who knows, who can remember? But those facilities and utilities were back there for that, I'm sure were built for that purpose. And then as people started developing around that, they started tying into them, and never was there an easement placed on that road. So now I've kind of lost your question, other than is there, should there be a sharing?
Yeah, should there be, while we're tying this, fine-tuning, or while we're fixing a non-agreement into an agreement with the city for the use of an easement? Should there not also be a paragraph that addresses if it is for profit, other than a public utility? There should be some minimal, minimus, whatever you want to call it, fee that the city was willing to charge to pass through to the county for use of that. Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, well, and it's the same thing with all the county roads. The city has water lines throughout all your county roads. And so.
Right.
Could I ask, maybe the engineer could clarify, who is connected in that area? What properties?
Well, Totem Village and the fairgrounds, and probably the transit company. And then, I don't know who's using the mental health facilities anymore, but I think that's basically who it is.
Jim, is Cal Fire affected by this?
Yeah, I bet they would be. And Juvenile Hall too, yeah, those facilities would go back to Juvenile Hall.
Well, I don't look to hold anything up, but I would like a recommendation from staff, whether it's appropriate or not, and if it is appropriate, standard in negotiations for something even if it's minimal. Just as a recognition that it's not a public utility, it's not public serving, it is private for profit.
Okay, and that would be with Big Five, or with Totem Village and all of them?
The easement is going to be with the city. So the agreement, this is what the attorneys are for, would be that if the city uses it, allows their easement to be used for, for profit, that there should be a fee.
Certainly, if the board gives direction, we can look in, I can look into that. My office can look into that. I hadn't had a chance to completely review everything on this particular agenda item, so I wasn't sure about all the agreements and how the easement was or was not created at that point. So I certainly, if given direction, will do so.
Okay. I don't want to create the impression or read the newspaper that the Board of Supervisors doesn't want Big Five in the community. That's not what this is about. It's about cleanup on public use easements, and what happens when they are used for private for profit.
Well, the county easements are used by all the utilities, like PG&E, and they, or Pacific Power, rather, and they get profit from everybody. And so it's, it's the same, I think, for all, for all the uses in the county easement. So it's kind of a big question. Now, we have franchise agreements with various utility companies, and I don't know whether we have one with the city or not.
Yeah, I don't think we get any money from the city for anything. I think we, utilities do, yeah. So is it going to, is there an urgency to this, or can we just pass it to council and staff to see what's appropriate? I certainly don't need to be, have our board be the first in Northern California that ever tried to do this.
I can shed background on their schedule. The Big Five is receiving bids the end of the second week in June, and plan to start construction by the end of June. So that's their schedule. That'll rely heavily on where they get, what their plan for utilities are, so.
I don't think I hear that we're going to deny it. I think is what I hear is we want to find out if there is an appropriate fee, what that fee would be, and to whom. And my feeling is it would be to the city, not to Big Five. But I would ask that we put this as an action item for our next agenda, if that's appropriate, if that would allow you time to research this, so we don't appear to be anti-business, but at the same time, not giving away services.
I just have one question. Is there a circumstance, or is there an area where we do charge any fee for any easement that we put into a private? I mean, I don't want to start it.
No, there's encroachment permits, is how you handle it.
Well, encroachment would be usually a road.
I don't believe there is, but it's something we don't know off the top of our heads.
Yeah, I really don't want to sound any alarm bells, but at the same time, there, I know at least one member of the public is still here, has a big question that I'd like answered also. Okay. Is that the consensus of this board?
Yes.
I'd oppose that. Any fee additional, I'd oppose.
Would you be opposed to the direction that I just gave, which was to staff to look into it and bring it back for action?
I think it sets a very slippery slope where we're entering into. I don't...
You don't want the information?
And Jim, please help me, and if you can, Jim, has there any, ever been a case where we have actually charged a fee to a private entity for such an endeavor? Now, again, Pac Power is a, they have stockholders, they're, they make a profit. Why are we exempting them? And now picking on...
Well, we do get money from, yeah.
Well, we have a franchise, we have a franchise agreement with the various utility companies, and I'm unaware of one with the city. And I certainly don't know whether, what's gone on in the county historically on these easements, because generally, the easements come in with some kind of a development. We don't have to go back and kind of retrofit easements, because they're generally done at the proper time. But, so, let's look into it, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay. So to be quite clear, there was an action that was called for to authorize and approve the granting, is what the consensus of the board that I heard, except from, and I'm not sure what Supervisor Gitlin was doing, whether he, if he wanted to make a motion to approve it, fine. The direction was to get more information to bring back so we, in fact, could take the proper action. And if you're opposed to that, then I'm sorry, but I don't hear anybody.
No, you're asking for something else. You're asking for, I'll use your verbiage, a pinch. That's what I heard you say. Pinch some.
No, no, Gitlin, no. Did you understand what I asked for?
Yeah, I'll talk with Mr. Barnes and Heidi, and we'll sit down.
And council, thank you. Very much.
And I just have one comment, an alarm comment, that it's kind of fallen on dead
ears with 101, but pulling out of Williams Drive, there are already about 20 active driveways within a block north and south of that area, and it is absolutely one of the most frightening places to drive in the county, because they're coming in all directions, and then they go down that suicide lane, the turn lanes, and it's just, so now we're adding a few more hundred cars a day to be there, and it's kind of a scary proposition.
Well, I do know on, and I, I don't know if it goes as far as Williams, but there is, Caltrans is in the middle of doing a traffic calming project. That's why you saw the sidewalks go up in front of Lisa's Custom Cop. Yeah, so there is, but there is a plan right now with local transportation as funds become available to address the north and south end of...
There might be an opportunity for improvement.
Well, that would be nice, and who would be, is it, we'd have to work with Caltrans on that.
Well, I'm thinking maybe Ryan has some insight as to the improvements that'll be done with this, and maybe what Caltrans is doing.
Yeah, Big Five is applying for an encroachment permit with Caltrans, so they are using their standard review for access to 101. The property does have two existing driveways for the motel that used to be on SIE, so they're not going to increase the access more than those two driveways.
Just haven't been used since 35.
Right. I mean, the conditions are a little different, and Caltrans is reviewing their encroachment permit for, for those, those access points.
And that would be the appropriate agency anyway, correct? Okay. All right, moving right along. Item number 25, authorize and approve Exhibit A, Annual Financial Plan of the Sheriff's Department, five-year cooperative law enforcement agreement with US Forest Service. Anybody here? It's been moved to approve. Anybody here from the Sheriff's Department?
This is an annual allocation in agreement with the Forest Service, been in place for many years.
Second.
Okay, the move in a second. Public comment? Back to the board for further discussion. Pull the vote, please.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sullivan?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes. Do we have any miscellaneous legislative or budget matters?
I'll go over the budget issues or the process right now. We are in the middle of our, or towards the end of our first round of local budget meetings.
Why don't you roll this right into your, the brief report from the county administrative officer?
Brief, right. We will be meeting with Health and Human Services. I think that's our final department. I believe it's this week. And then we'll be sitting down and looking at what alternatives we have. The requested budget from the departments is in deficit, as it typically is, along with some of the issues that come with finishing up the year end. So we'll know more, obviously, when year end comes around, and see some, what some of the revenue projections end up being. And we'll report back at each meeting to the Board of Supervisors. You will receive a recommended budget for, basically, for spending authority at the end of June, and then the real work starts over the next couple of months to get it to a final. And as far as legislation, you've, you've seen the letters that have come forward that needed immediate action. There are a number of bills that are still out there in different levels of holding. Obviously, the, the Pilt legislation has been something that we've been following closely, and will continue to follow. It isn't appropriated in the governor's budget, but obviously, that's something that could assist with our services.
Jay, is there any update on the Walk Nielsen bill?
That's, that's the bill.
That's the bill?
It's in, it's in suspense. It was not the governor's budget. The May revise did not show appropriation at this point. But there are, there are discussions happening. It doesn't appear that it's going to happen primarily based on the Glen County lawsuit. Until that's completed.
That was the reason that he's standing behind.
And we will continue to bring forward any type of legislation that requires board approval or standing. And as far as the report, I'll get through it quick. We've met miscellaneous negotiations, but specifically with the doctors and physicians assistants for jail medical. We met with the nurses, and you approved a contract today with Jim Phillips for another year of nursing. It does tie into the doctors and physician assistants. That one, we'll be having more discussions about. Had a meeting with the city manager regarding projects and shared services, and we'll be meeting with him again here real soon to discuss any options we might have. Had some employee negotiations with the sheriff employees, and we continue on with that. Miscellaneous and numerous budget meetings. Met with the Council of Economic Advisors, and then with Tri-Agency to come up with some alternatives and/or some continuing steps for Tri-Agency to continue to be the lead regarding economic development, and then getting the involvement of the Council of Economic Advisors to try to come up with the next round of projects and/or issues that everybody can get behind and support. Had some negotiations with the Yurok Tribe, and calls with the State of California regarding those negotiations, and a number of meetings with different departments and staff regarding issues that they brought forward.
Okay. As far as other budget matters, the $100 million that the governor had said was fine in the budget to start the $900 million payback for counties that is due to start next year, for the next two years, for pre-2004 realignment, mental health issues. The legisla, the, both houses have pulled it out. And so CSAC is vigorously trying to find the weak spot there. Unfortunately, the way it works, and a lot of it has to do with the surplus, suppose the surplus that's there, they want the governor, anything that he says he wants, they want him to buy. While they may agree with it, they want him to give something else. So they're going to want him to go back and fund some more senior programs or children programs that he took out. So I think they pretty much agreed on the rainy day program, but there's still a lot of other things up in the air like that, that hopefully we will see, which would be nice. Hopefully, we will see Pilt. I doubt it until the Glen County thing is done.
Quick way to settle a lawsuit.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing is, well, they don't, the problem is, finance is telling them that you don't owe it. And that's the problem. But, you know, some of the other stuff that's there, like the, another hundreds of millions of dollars for extension, one year extension for the AB 109, asking for one more year in the transition there. So a lot of things are still in play. Unfortunately, they haven't done shredding and carving and cutting up and marking up the legislation. If you want to go see sausage made, go down to the Capitol, the last week of legislation.
You may be interested, as a board as a whole, the interesting part of the negotiations down there with AB 109 included the mandates and some comments, and I'm gathering from the discussion, it's, politics at its best, is negotiating over those mandates to pay off some of the 109 additional costs. So it'll be interesting to see how those all wash out.
Well, and it's like the one, the mandate for the Brown Act. Nobody is going to say we shouldn't adhere to the Brown Act, but by supporting that bill, there is no reimbursement. So it's an unfunded mandate, which we are strongly against. So how do you slice that? And it's, it's, like I said, when all the legislators, the heads got together, it was, oh, we all agree, good job, this is what we need to do. And then they went back to their respective caucuses and disagreed on what they should be getting for that.
Alice in Wonderland.
So we will see. And unless there's anything further, this meeting stands adjourned.